All right.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of America, with which we stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Okay.
Got everybody's name from the audience? Everybody sign in?
Sarah, sign in.
I did not, Chris.
I got you.
I'm Marley Mindings.
I got you. Um, if you... There are a couple of names I couldn't make out, um, on the agenda. So if you speak tonight, please introduce who you are. That's the, the big requirement. If you speak, we need to have your name in the, in the minutes. If not, technically, I don't need to take you down, but I know who you are, so I write your name down anyway. So just make sure to introduce yourself. And we have our select board members present. We have Mike Beecher, Jessica Vanort, and John Malcolm. And virtually, this is our meeting owl, this contraption in the front of the room. And we have Bob Jones and Rich Hewlett. Our other select board members are virtually with us tonight. Um, addition or deletion of agenda items. We have a very, very, very full agenda this evening, so keep that in mind. We have two, um, additions. Under pre-requested, we have Lindsay Barnes, who's our new librarian at the Polat Public Library, who's here this evening. And under, um, reports, in the road foreman's report, there are a couple of forms that the board needs to address and consider. And additionally, under new business, uh, there's some, a discussion that needs to take place about the pedestrian scoping study and a local concerns meeting for that. And so friendly reminder to everybody about how the meetings run. Everybody addresses questions to our chair. If you are pre-requested appearances, you have about 10 minutes total. So if you have about, you know, five minutes or so to speak to the board and address the board, and that gives about five minutes for further discussion. And tonight, that's very important that we stick to that. A lot of times, we don't, but we have a lot to discuss. There's executive session that the board needs to go into tonight. So tonight, this is an opportunity to present information to the board. This is not an opportunity necessarily for the board to respond. So please keep that in mind.
Thank you. Approval of the previous minutes.
So there's November 2nd and the special meeting minutes.
Um, can we do one motion for both?
Two separate.
Okay. Um, I'll move that we accept the November 2nd minutes.
I'll second that.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we have to do it...
Right, so I have to do a row call with those two guys, too. All right. John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
I muted.
You're muted.
Were you able to hear that mic?
We could hear you, Bob. We just couldn't hear you, Rich.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. We got it.
All right. And then I'll also move that we accept the, um, November 9th? November 9th minutes.
And there's one, there was somebody who came on as Bill's iPhone, and that was Bill Humphries. So I just made one edit to the attendance.
Okay. Do you want to second that, John?
Oh, I'll second that.
That's great. Thank you.
Yes, we've got much choice.
All in favor? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Approved. Thank you. Okay. Pre-requested. Bob Morlino.
Okay. Thank you. I'm an emergency, for those that don't know me, Emergency Management Director for the Town of Polat. Uh, the state of Vermont's in the process of developing a grant application to fund updates to the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is a plan that we put together every five years. Ours is the Town of Polat's Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. It will expire in 2023. However, the state is looking for a grant from the federal government, which usually gets approved by the federal government, to aid in putting together these local hazard mitigation plans. So what they're looking for from us, because the Town of Polat would start to work on this next year, 2022, in order to get it in, uh, by 2023. And typically, what we do is, uh, we pay the Rutland Regional Planning Commission or any consultant who's capable of doing this, uh, to update our plan. And what the state is looking for is a local match commitment letter from the town, uh, to fund this. So the, uh, they project the total cost would be, uh, $11,000. The federal share would be 75% of that, which is about $83, $8400. And the local match would be about 27, well, exactly, 27, 87, 50. So $2,787. So they're looking for a, a, a signature on that commitment letter to, um, to get the ball rolling for us. So I have the... Any questions, first of all, on that?
I mean, in that local hazard mitigation, to have that all in order makes a big difference whether we get all of our, uh, grants and stuff like that for roadwork and stuff like that, correct?
Exactly. That's the Emergency Relief Assistance Fund, which I have a handout if you wanted to see it. But the long and short of it is, you have to have, um, a number of things approved by the town in the town's, uh, approval process to get this Emergency Relief Assistance Fund and to get the, um, to get the, the, the most out of it. So for instance, you have to have, um, four things for the, for the state match. You have to have the most recent VTранs Town Road and Bridge Standards approved, which Keith Mason handles every, every time for us. We have to have the Flood Hazard Bylaw in accordance with State National Flood Insurance Program.
Which we've done.
Which the, the town has done, year after year. We have to have a Local Emergency Operations Plan, which we update each year. And then the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, uh, which is the fourth item, which is what we're talking about here tonight. And what that does for you, if you have all of those things and you also add in there the, um, adoption of the River Corridor, which again, the town, the, the select board has done already. Instead of, when you have a, 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 an emergency relief fund, there's a disaster in town like the Irene situation, instead of only getting 25%, because we have all of these items, uh, in hand, we only pay, uh, 7.5%. The state pays the balance because we have all of these. And the local hazard mitigation plan is one of the things we need to keep, uh, in order to keep our ERAF, which the ERAF is the Emergency Relief Assistance Fund. In order to keep to that its maximum, uh, we have to have this, uh, done, uh, approved every five years.
Anybody got any questions?
No.
Right now, we just need a motion, right?
That you could sign it. A motion that you...
A motion to, uh, to match that 25% to, uh, apply for that...
Grant.
That, uh, that, uh, to grant, to redo our, to stay in...
Update it, yep.
Update it. Okay.
Well, sure. I'll make that motion.
No, I'll second that.
Is there any more discussion? Rich and Bob, do you understand what we're... Have any questions?
Signature on the last page.
No question.
Mike, this is Bob. I'm fine with it.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Rich, I muted you because there was feedback. So I think you have to hit a, a star, a button to unmute yourself.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. All in favor? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich? In favor?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Pass. Carried. Thank you.
So then we'll just need to add that match amount into our budget as well.
Right. Sign it where it says click or tap there, right above my name?
Yeah. Just, just sign it. Yeah.
Click or tap.
And then I have to, I have to send that into the state.
Thank you very much, Bob. Appreciate your work on this.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Bob, or... All good. Okay. Monica?
Yeah. Hi. I'm Monica Fadick. And I'm here to, um, get approval from the town to put monument on the green because of the significant history that happened here in this town. I don't know whether the audience of you know about the 1777 expedition. And the Polat Expedition became not a main strand, but one of the threads of the web that entangled and destroyed the dawn. And that destruction is a momentous for American history. So I have a prototype monument for the green. I have 114 signatures from our residents. And it was just amazing talking to our residents. Most of them didn't know we had this history in our town. Many thought that we bring the community together. And, um, there was comments about holding the young people, leave, leave, leave the town. And, um, this, this would be a cohesive point on our green to educate generations and generations from now of what really happened here, um, in Polat. And I can read to you, or you can read yourself, the plaque that would be on the plaque about the Polat Expedition. And what is really amazing is that we have a Colonel Samuel Herrick, who was one of the Rangers. And guess what? He's still, the, the Herricks are still in this town. Black Herrick, Herrick Jr. And he was the first to sign this, this, um...
Petition.
Petition. And people who didn't know about this thought it was just amazing. And we did, we do have, and I explained to them, we do have a monument, a small stone with a plaque over it, the North Schoolhouse. And they said, "Where is that?" Everybody drives by. It's not visible, and there's no parking. And it's, it's really time to put something on the green. Would be a Herrick Ranger, maybe a portrait of a plaque on, and the plaque on there. The history, when I learned about the history, was from a book by Christopher S. Wren. He's a professor up at, um, Dartmouth College. He was a Times reporter, and he wrote the book, uh, The Green Mountain Boys, those turbulent Green Mountain Boys. I've been here for 22 years. And in 2000, the book came out in 2018, and I read it in 2020. And I said, "This is amazing." And I asked him where he got the information. Well, I met him up at Mountain Independence. And he said, "It's right in your, his store, library in Montpelier, Vermont history, the Polat Expedition." It's also in 100 years from Hollister, which is in our, our library. And he talks about the Polat Expedition also. He talks about the Herricks and the Rangers. You have, this is the book, Turbulent Songs of Reno. And there's a very special book, The British Are Coming, by Rick Atkinson. He is a Polat Supplies, uh, author. And it's the first of a trilogy. And I wrote to him, and I said, "Oh, you didn't mention Polat." And he said, "Well, this is from the 1776s. My next book will have Polat, and it should, Polat should be proud." So this is very valuable information. And, um, the, the statue, the Herrick Ranger statue, will be made by a sculptor in Grafton. He's quite well-known. He works in bronze. And he just finished sculpture for the Grafton's. And he's also a history major. And, um, he would be delighted to do it. And the base of the stone would come from RMG Stone up in Castleton. And they're aware of, uh, a design for it with plaques. And the whole, the whole, uh, stone and, and statue would be two feet wide by three feet in length, four feet high. And the finished statue would be seven, seven and a half feet high. So it's not a huge, it fits nicely on the green. Um, I do have three letters also of support from the Division of Historic Preservation, the Daughters of the American Revolution, the Sons of American Revolution, if I do get the approval from the board, because they would be contributing to it, and our legislators, Sally Atkins. There are identified, I identified three very good grants, because this would be funded by grants and public donation. And the timing would be about four to five years. Look at it for 2026, which would be the 215th anniversary of our country. And, uh, and the cost would probably run around $25,000 to $30,000. But I think it can be done with the grants and the donation. So if you have any questions? Oh, I have to mention though, Barry Minarath, who is President of the Historic Society, supports this. He's been President for four years. And also Steve Williams, as we say, that yes, he does support it. And he's President for eight years of the Historic Society. What else do I have here? I also spoke to Mr. Russo recently, and he showed me the spoon buried in his, his backyard when he was building his house from the Revolutionary War. There are a lot of artifacts up and down the roadway where the encampment happened. They didn't use tents. They slept on the ground. They went out, 500 men to Ticonderoga, 500 men to Mountain Independence, another 500 men that was sent from here to, um, Skansboro, which is Whitehall, and also to Lake George, where they intercepted a lot of his supplies coming down. And if it wasn't for Polat and the expedition, we might not have won Saratoga. And Saratoga was the turning point in the war. Because guess what? We finally won a battle, and the French kicked in and supplied us with what we needed to, to fight the, the rest of the battles. So it was really a turning point. And Polat really should be proud of what happened here.
Do you have some information that you can leave with the board so they can look that over and...
Sure. I can, I can leave you one of these.
Does anybody have any...
I can leave, I can give you...
We don't need photocopy everything tomorrow.
Yeah. I could do that. I can photocopy everything. You can take a quick look at the signatures. Black past mine. And I'd like to just read a quote in closing by Rick Atkinson. And this is a quote by Adams. "Yes, more distresses and calamities lay ahead." This was as there were losing battles in Washington. As Adam foresaw, but he took comfort in believing that the great struggle would remain an astonishment to the minds all over the world in this and in future generations. Words convincing a similar sentiment had been scribbled in the orderly book of the Second New York Regimen. They read like lyrics for an anthem sung by people on the march. "The rising world shall sing of us a thousand years to come and tell our children's children the wonders we have done." We have a special nation, and Polat was part of that, an active part of creating this nation.
Anybody have any questions?
I do. Um, is there, is there a specific ask you have of the select board regarding this? Like, what, what are, are you asking the select board to do something at this point?
Yes. To approve, uh, a, a, a letter of approval to put a monument on the green. So this way, I can use that letter of approval to get these grants.
So this way, so you would be writing a grant, and you were looking for a letter of support for your grant?
Yes.
From the select board?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I can add that to the agenda.
I think this, this requires more review than, than I think we can do tonight. So this will have to be a...
I can offer to scan, um, because we are... Yeah. I think...
We're tight on time already.
We're over time already for pre-approved and pre-requested. And we do have another, we do have Lindsay on the list as well. So I can, I'll scan this information in and provide it to the select board for their consideration. And then I think this topic can be added to the next meeting's agenda where there can be more discussion on it.
Yes.
Is that fine?
Takes some more time to review and stuff.
Yeah. That way, the select board can understand what the ask is. Um, and then the next time, we can have it under old business or ongoing business. And then that can offer more opportunity for comment.
Right.
Um, or, you know, public comment can be at the end if anybody wants to add anything this evening.
Rose, I saw your hand was up.
Yes. If, uh, so my name is Rose Smith. I'm the current president now of the Polat Historical Society, voted in last week. We do have the monument at the North Polat School. We are planning some events and outreach and literature to educate the community about the Polat Expedition of 1777. We just want people to know that we're not forgetting it. We're trying to, um, better direct people to the monument we have. We do not support additional items put on the green as a board, as a majority. Thank you.
Thank you. Eve?
I know we're under time pressure. I just really quickly wanted to speak in favor of the idea of putting some sort of monument on the green because I feel that history's very important. And the more opportunities that we can give our community to talk about our communal history, the better. I think it's been 10 years since we had the 250th celebration here in Polat of the founding of our town. I think we need, we need more opportunities to talk about all the wonderful things that are in our history. We need to do it thoughtfully and with respect. Um, and I think that this is one of those opportunities to bring this to attention, not only for people who are passing through and who are visiting, which is important, but also to the people who live here and don't know that history. This will give them that opportunity to engage with it. And I think that's extremely deeply important.
Thank you. Julie?
Just real quick, because I know we're timed, uh, regarding this specific issue, there's more to think about than the fact that it may or may not be published by grants in this entirety. You will have upkeep to this monument. You will have increased cost in our town's insurance to cover the monument. You'll have an increased liability. I have seen in the last week alone, no more, or no less than five children climbing on top of the current monuments that we have on the green. And this one is going to be bigger and more dangerous. So those are thoughts that you need to consider and your responsibility for keeping our community safe and covering us from liable. And I have no problem with the concept of educating our community about history. And I think that there is a wonderful school several miles down the road that would benefit from an education on this topic, and that that would be the best way to serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
The, the point of this is that we have a monument up by the old school, and nobody knows about it. Whether you point to it or have literature about it, that falls away. We have something permanent. Most towns in Vermont, if you look around, have monuments on the green, and they have no problem with liability or insurance. We've all grown up in towns where there are monuments. We, we like to play on them, hide and seek around them. But it's part of the way we live. Um, it's a work of art.
Marty?
Um, as, as far as the liability is concerned, as an add-on to the current municipal insurance policy, I don't think you'd even notice the additional rider on something like this.
Right now, we're just, these are all things that have come up to consider. But we, we have much more to discuss about this monument than, than we can account.
I'd just like to take that particular point on because, uh, there are other issues in town, you know, where the town, uh, has had, uh, potential liabilities, and they haven't worried about them. And, uh, suddenly to focus on a monument on a town green as being unaffordable to a town because it will put a couple more dollars on the municipal insurance policy, to me is, is really a stretch. But what I, what I'd also say is, the same children who would be playing around this monument, they would also be taking note of the fact that these are their ancestors. These are the people who made it possible for them to have a town green. They formed this town. And some of them still, their descendants still live here. And one of the problems in this state has been the loss of young people. They just get up and move out because they have no pride of place, and they don't see opportunities. And I think this is the kind of thing that a young child seeing this will say, "I'm a part of this." And, and this is a reason for, for me to sink roots here and stay here.
Can I take 30 seconds?
Okay. And then that has to be the last comment.
We have to wrap this up because we got a lot more business. We've already rolled over.
I'm Barry Minarath. Uh, many of you know me as the past president of the Polat Historical Society. I've got comments I'd like to make on this that I'll reserve tonight just to the, uh, the monument at the North Polat School. Six years ago, Steve Williams got a request from a group in Burlington to come visit a number of monuments. Uh, we had an appointment at 11:30 on a Saturday morning for them to come down here. Uh, we ended up with 30 cars parked on both sides of Route 30. How we avoided a fatality, let alone a traffic accident, I'll never know. But it's, the, the monument there is pretty uninspiring. It's a stone with a plaque in it. We can promote that all we want. It's never going to be something that will attract people there. So I think what Monica has come up with is a much more interesting quintessentially Vermont, Vermont-made. And, uh, I think it would be a great addition to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll continue this discussion at the next meeting.
Is, is there a, a time limit on the discussion on it?
So it's on the agenda for the next meeting.
Oh, for the next meeting?
Yeah. So that'll give, it'll be under unfinished business or ongoing business. And so that'll give every, all the board an opportunity to see and review.
I'm just, I'm just concerned that there are deadlines for...
I'm just, I'm just concerned that there are deadlines for the round.
Well, it'll be at the next, they'll discuss at the next meeting, I think, right? Is safe to say?
Yes, yes. There'll be more discussion at the next meeting for certain. Okay. Lindsay?
Some handouts. So I'm Lindsay Barnes. I'm delighted to be the new director of the Politt Public Library. Last week, uh, the library board of trustees submitted a, uh, the library budget with three specific requests, um, of the town. The details of those, um, you were given in emails. Um, a quick summary of that is an increase in salary for the assistant librarian, uh, the director, and for the town to take on, um, the remaining portion of the salary for the community connector. So the objective for the library is essentially that library staff must be paid fair wages. A quote from the American Library Association President, Maurice Friedman, says, "America's libraries don't just happen. They are run by highly educated librarians and skilled library workers, unsung heroines and heroes who far too frequently are underpaid and under-recognized." Another talking point, um, would be, you know, libraries work because workers, library workers make them work. And I wanted to provide some statistics for you, um, from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. They did a report in 2020 called the Vermont Municipal Compensation and Benefits Report. In this 215-page report, the specific pages, um, that in regards to the library are page 132 to 135. And it says that library senior staff's median pay in the state of Vermont is $27.20 an hour. A librarian's median pay is $18.32 an hour. And an assistant librarian's median pay is $16 an hour. So in achieving salary equity, it is possible. And the Vermont League of Cities and Towns says that it generally costs less than 4% of the payroll budget. And the Vermont Library Association, there was a study that found that current pay for librarians in small towns is not equal to the recommended livable wage for the state. Cost-benefit studies have confirmed that libraries have positive economic value. Libraries provide the community with social, cultural, and educational benefits as well. The connection must be made, that the quality staff is behind these services. In a world that's information-rich, librarians bring valuable expertise. They connect us with our past, enrich our present, and prepare us for the future.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Lindsay?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for bringing that.
Welcome.
Any announcements tonight? Is there any report from the zoning administrator?
Yes. Let me get it coming. President, can you do an announcement about the VTEL free Thanksgiving meal for 65-plus customers?
Yes, so an announcement, backtracking, thank you Julie.
Yes.
So from the, a message from VTEL. Happy Thanksgiving. We know COVID-19 continues to present a challenging time for our dear customers. Again this year, as a small effort to uplift spirits, we'd like to offer our customers aged 65 or older using VTEL or VTEL Wireless a free Thanksgiving dinner. Due to concerns for everyone's health, this year's feast will be pickup only. We promise a delicious and homegrown Springfield turkey dinner with all the trimmings and dessert. Please RSVP today to pick up your meal on Friday, November 26th, 2021, at Black Rock Steakhouse at 282 River Street in Springfield, Vermont. You can RSVP at vermontell.com/Thanksgiving. So, zero costs, tips are forbidden.
I hope you feel a bit cold when you get home.
So preheat your oven. And if anybody wants more information on that, you feel free to let me know and I'll relay this information along. But we'll also maybe have it posted on our website, um, and maybe here at the town hall. So if you qualify, get your, get your Thanksgiving turkey on Black Friday.
Thank you.
Okay, zoning administrator's report. No free turkeys, but, um, so no new permits have been approved. There have been none requested. The DRB heard an appeal back on November 1st of permit 2005-06. This was reported last week to the board. Merrill Bent, who's our town attorney, and the DRB are reviewing the testimony and the evidence presented regarding permit 2005-06. Mr. Wesco has requested a decision from the zoning administrator's office regarding permit 2008-01 regarding the validity of the permit. I will review this and other information that attorney Merrill Bent says is relevant shortly after a decision on permit 2005-06 is reached. Thank you, Jonas.
Planning commission?
None at this meeting.
None at this meeting. Road foreman's report. Anybody have anything?
Um, I, I received a complaint today by another citizen about the Danby Politt Road, um, saying that the road drops off significantly from the top, um, where it meets the shoulder and that especially by where the mailboxes are. And that this, this, um, person feels that it could be hazardous when people, if they should happen to drive one, um, tire off of the road and then come back on. It's like a three or four inch jump at some points. And, um, this person showed me some photos of other work that this company has done where they have put more gravel in, right, to, to meet the blacktop and it doesn't have as much of a jump. So they wish to register their complaint about the quality of that work.
Rich, can you speak on that? Have you had a chance to talk about to Keith when they're coming back to do the shoulder work?
So are they not done on that yet? Because this person felt like it's not done.
Go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, Mike, I, I haven't, I haven't had a chance to, uh, to talk with Tom to see when he is coming back. I know he's planning to bring the shoulder machine back and the, the shoulder gravel is piled up at the town barn in Politt, uh, waiting for that machine. So it is on the schedule. Tom just hasn't had an opportunity to get, get back here yet.
Okay. I'll, I'll relay that if they combine.
They do come in with a machine. I know we gotta fix Ashley's driveway too, right? You gonna talk to him about that? That's been repaired? Okay. So the shoulder machine, they'll come in and they'll do up, up both sides of the road so that it won't be such a drop-off.
All right.
And that's just something that they, they do after we, after we pave and, but sometimes depending on logistics and stuff, it takes a few weeks.
I'm sure the folks on Danby Politt Road will be happy once that's done.
Yeah. Frank?
Yeah, on the, uh, kind of the bridge between the quarry holes and what, and at the end is spruce gum going up on the other side. What's going on with the road there? It's really sinking, it seems, I wonder.
Yeah, I noticed that last night when I came through.
Or maybe recently.
Yeah, I was...
Needs to be looked at, maybe.
Yeah. Rich, you, you're gonna, do you ever think you might have a chance to get with Keith and, and look at that?
Uh, yeah, where's the, where's Bryce referencing?
Where, where they, where in between, uh, my old house and the, in the town garage? Where they, where they pushed the road in there seems to be settling. That seems to be settling a lot.
Yeah, after work.
Since it started draining and working that pit, it's...
Yeah. So I, I don't know if we gotta put some fill in there again or what. When they first did that job, it settled for years and years and years. So...
Fine, we'll take a look at it.
All right, I appreciate that. And are Markowski gonna move into West Politt Village after they're done with the sewer project?
That's the plan, yeah.
Okay. Okay, good. Well, talk more about the sewer project when we get down to the treatment facility. And anything else that you know of from the roadside?
Um, not that I'm aware of right now, no. I think you probably know.
Okay, thank you. Grants and aid forms?
Yes, so the first one, um, there was some confusion. So for the grants and aid program for fiscal year 22, which is beginning, obviously in 2022, um, there was some confusion regarding communication and who to send what to and in all of, you know, everything that's been going on this summer. Um, so Politt is overdue in submitting their grant agreement form. And basically what, to quickly sum it up from what I can understand, so grants and aid used to be run through the Agency of Natural Resources. So that was a little bit more streamlined. It's now shifted and it's run through the Agency of Transportation, which heavily involves VTran, uh, yeah, VTrans. So there's some additional information that's required from the municipalities to, you know, appease what VTrans needs as well. So there's the grant agreement that the town needs to sign. And that is for the grants and aid program for FY '22. The award start, it's for a total award amount of $12,100. The award start date would be July 1st and award end date of 2021. Um, so that is why we're a little bit overdue there. And the end date is December 31st of 2022. So that needs to be signed.
Is that for a specific project or?
It's for the grant, so this year, the grants and aid project is what we had to forego, the Kelly Hill project. So I don't know if there is a specific project that's already been determined. I'm not 100% sure. Um, what I do understand is that there's, along with these grants and aid programs, there's, the town has to adhere to the best management practices, which is kind of what Bob was speaking about earlier. And in order to do that, there are several, there are about 20, I think it's 28 segments of road that Politt needs to attend to and work on to make, to adhere to the best management practices, I think by '24 or '26, somewhere in that realm. So, um, these projects are all getting us towards that final goal of the full completion of the different segments. Now, I spoke to representatives from the Rutland Regional Offices who kind of helped me to wrap my arms around this a little bit. Um, and we have completed some of these other segment projects through different grant programs over the years. So like some of our FEMA grants or, um, the Better Roads programs, things like that have also been used to get us there. So right now, our, our completion is trending as low amount of completion, but we're actually better off than that just because we have to go in and log our completion of what we've done through other grant programs. But this is basically saying that we are in agreement and we're going to continue to want to utilize the grants and aid program, which we definitely do. So there is a signature form here. And now I'm not, I'm, I'm feel, I'm just a little bit detached because I think Keith was maybe starting to work on this a little bit, but I'm not totally sure. But I think just to make sure that we have ourselves covered, um, it would be in our best interest. We've, I've been getting a lot of like, this is your final reminder.
Julie?
This was about $12,000?
$12,000.
I think that we've been getting this money. I think that this is coming in as like highway supplement. So in lieu of some of the grants, they've been allowing, they've just been doing a supplement to towns. So instead of like a grant project and X number of dollars, they've just given towns small, like more towns, smaller amounts, and they've given the money out quarterly. So we've gotten some of this money already.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not 100% sure that's what this is.
Yeah.
But, um, we're getting like $3,000 a quarter, so that works out for, that's probably what this is. And there's, you should sign it because we already have some money.
Yeah, that's the thing, we're definitely overdue on this, so.
So basically we just gotta make a motion to sign it, right?
Yes.
Looks like John isn't...
I'm fast. So make a motion, Greg. We, uh, sign the forms for the, uh, federal grant.
Grant, grants and aid?
Grants and aid.
Do we all need this?
No.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any more discussion? John, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yeah.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so the fund's not over yet because we got another email. So there, for fiscal year '22, there's a municipal roads grants and aid program for equipment purchase. And we have received this because we are eligible, um, for a grant to buy equipment. So it's through the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation. They've offered select municipalities funding to purchase one piece of equipment that will support municipal roads grant, general permit implementation, MRGP, which is something that we are working on and always enjoying. Um, our municipality is eligible for equipment funding since we were in compliance as of December 1st of 2020. So, equipment type, um, roller compacters for attachment to grader to improve road crown, leaf blowers to clean leaves and sediment from ditches and reduce culvert plugging, hydrocedars to accelerate revegetation of disturbed soil areas, plate or jumping jack compactors to install drainage culverts, tractor-mounted shoulder discs to remove high-road shoulders. Hey. Hay bale shredder to distribute hay mulch on disturbed soil areas, stone screener to clean out and replace stone and ditch. And those are some examples of what we might be able to, um, receive funding for. It looks like there's, so there's a cash, cash match requirement, 20% of equipment cost, and it looks like the most that that might possibly be is around $1,600. So if the board would like to participate that, in that and...
Do we have to check what we want?
Nope, it's just a letter of intent. Oh, you do have to indicate which piece of equipment you would like to purchase. It is due by Friday. Oh, sorry, not by Friday. It's due... Yeah, by Friday, November 19th.
Julie?
Can we retroact until we take the blower out of this?
That's what I was curious.
So, to support, provide 20% cash match for equipment purchases by the final completion date of June 30th, 2022. It does not say that you can't. What says good, right? Um, I think that we, yeah, that's a very good question.
I mean, let's try to buy the blower.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's vote to approve it and we'll mark down the blower and we'll see if we can't get it.
The leaf blower to clean leaves and sediment? Okay. So if you...
Well, we probably gotta make a motion for that too, right?
Yes.
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we apply for this grant for the leaf blower.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Greg.
Okay, I think...
All right. All in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yeah.
Bob?
Yes.
All right, motion approved.
Great. Is there, um, just to backtrack real quick... Is there, um, just to backtrack real quick, so the standard grant agreement form from fiscal year 22, does somebody want to, I should have focused on that. Um, does somebody want to just acknowledge, I might need somebody to follow up with in case, because there was a lot of back and forth on this. So in, in the event that we need something else, can you and I just continue to work together to get whatever? Very good. Thank you. Okay.
I think that's it for the, did the assessors have a report for this meeting?
Thank you.
Did the assessors have any report?
No.
Nothing from them?
Not that, not that was sent to me.
Okay. The town clerk have a memo?
No.
Pay attention.
Uh, Deb is here, though.
Okay. Well, then Deb can read it. That would be awesome.
Hi, Deb.
Hi there. Um, don't really have anything, um, for the board, um, unless the board going into your executive session or budget planning, if you have any questions for me with anything that pertains to my office. I'm gonna be out of the office for a couple of days participating in the Remington Clerks Conference. So, um, now is the time to ask me if you have any questions.
I can't think of anything right at the moment, Deb. Anybody else? Guess everything must be good.
Well, one would hope, right?
All right, thank you, Deb. Enjoy your...
All right, have a good evening. I'll be here for a little while longer if you need something.
Okay, great. Town treasurer?
Um, I don't have my report in front of me, but Christian can read the numbers. Um, uh, I think the only thing I had, we had the two warrants, um, regarding the accounts payable warrants, um, I had emailed you all about the ski door invoice. That's not on the warrant because Harry got back to me that they hadn't actually completed the work, like it's still not working. So I just pulled that aside, set it aside. Um, Fuller's invoice was on there, but if they're not actually completed, then I'm, I mean, the check, I can print the check and hold off on sending it, or we can remove it from the warrant um, or, and put it on next time, whatever you think. But if, if the work's not completed, then I don't know that we need to pay the full shot.
I don't. I don't know if, if, okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Rich.
Um, my understanding in the contract, um, because I don't have the contract here in front of me, was, uh, between the town and Fuller. So I don't believe he was responsible for the shoulder work. I think he just brings his machine to help us out. We get the material pile it up and we feed his machine, he just brings it. Um, so if you look back at the contract, I think his portion of it is completed, um...
It was just a black top?
The shoulder, shoulder was included.
Okay. I believe the, and, and I, I think that's right too. I don't think we quoted the shoulder work with the, the black top. It was just strictly to do the black topping. The shoulder was, was separate. Okay, thank you.
And then, and then, um, and then I think the only other thing I had on there was the, um, the funds that we have received, uh, for October and early, uh, November, which a lot of that was like state aid, um, for the highway. Uh, and then the audit is complete, and I left you several copies there. I also have it in PDF. Um, I believe I emailed that PDF copy to everybody, but if not, let me know and I'll re-mail it if you want. And hardbound, uh, take it off of the desk. Um, spoke with Jill at VTOMs and I made calls to Irving for theater repair, which is not yet done. And I made, um, a phone call to Consolidated Communications because the phone and internet were out for several days. That has been repaired, although she is, um, she did express that it goes out frequently. So, um, I know we had talked to another company, we'd gotten a quote, but I don't think we got like a true quote because the highway is on that same account, the West Polat garage. So we may want to reach out and try to get another quote and see if we can find another service provider that would be a little more reliable. Um, and that's all I have. So we'll just read the numbers. Uh, for grant payments, we got, um, $1,285.50 for land use change tax. That goes into the general fund. We got $1,748 in homestead state payments. That's again, the general fund. $27,344.83 for state aid and the highway supplement, which is, I think this, uh, grant paperwork that you're signing, that's in the highway fund. Uh, payroll was $8,518.19. The count's payable was $186,109.11. Uh, that's the fuller, uh, that's why it's so high. Um, so general fund money is $18,127.93. Highway, $171,288.55. And wastewater was $5,210.82.
Do I have a motion to pay the warrants?
Sure, I'll move that we pay the warrants.
I'll second that.
All in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yeah.
Ra, Bob?
Yes.
Okay, approved. Carrie, thank you. Now, where are we? Left for the budget, we have just, um, employees' wages. And everything else is, is pretty well set, right? Okay. So we just need to have a, a vote on that. Okay. Do we need to go into exec, executive session and discuss anything further?
Yes.
We have, we have a separate issue too.
Okay.
There is executive session on the agenda.
Is that at the end?
At break before public comment.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't see you give the...
Yeah, we haven't done, we haven't done all business or real business yet.
We have two pages of fun-filled...
Okey dokey.
...segment tonight.
All right.
We're doing well.
Well, let's keep rolling then. We'll go in and deal with that then. Emergency Management Director, do you have anything to share from that position, Bob?
No, if any, just if anybody has any questions. Uh, the only thing that happened since the last report is yesterday, I took, uh, two people from Vermont Emergency Management and two people from FEMA around. FEMA wanted to see the 10, 10 different culverts that we had installed in the town for the last, uh, probably eight or nine years. They wanted to actually see them and take pictures. So I drove them around, saw 10 culverts, and they were very happy with them.
Nice.
If anybody has any questions on emergency management.
Okay. I guess we're good. Health officer? Nothing from Jennifer.
Jennifer is here this evening. Do you have anything to offer this evening? Jennifer, did you have anything? Oh, we can't, she's talking, we can't hear you. I see you're unmuted, but I don't hear your voice coming from the owl. If you want to type it, I can announce it for you. She will have something at the, the first meeting in December.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the wastewater?
So there's a report from Jill Marsano from Vermont Utility Management Services. Um, Markowski is supposed to be mobilizing the site today, which was yesterday, and, uh, begin their dig on the 16th of November, which is today in West Polat. If anyone knows of a local person who may be interested in working part-time for VTOMs at the facility, we are looking for a capable person who would be happy to work an hour or so each day on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday. Please share their contact with me if you know of anyone. If anybody knows of anybody, you're welcome to email me and I can pass it along to Jill. Uh, future priorities, does the board wish to continue to pursue this or let it go for now? And she's referring to the RFQ. Jenny Oster from Hoyle Tanner and Associates should be sending over a proposed scope and fee in the next few weeks with recommendation to apply for RD program in December of 2021 for the bond vote in March of 2022. So that is something...
I want to talk to Jill some more about that. I think with everything going on, I don't think that we can afford to put any, any more money with, with, out having a, a, a better payoff than, than what the sludge...
So will you follow up with her on that?
So as soon as we can get through this water main, or the surface water getting into the sewer line project problem, well, I'll, I'll talk to her, but I'll certainly have information to share with you guys tomorrow or the, at the next meeting, in two weeks, not tomorrow.
Okay. Um, so there's that. And then for upcoming projects, 11-13 through whenever it needs, Markowski repair of gravity sewer under culvert on Route 153 just before the church on the opposite side. Next is to schedule a replacement or repair of air valve near end of Force Main from Spruce Gum Pump Station with Mike McDougall. This has been scheduled and is awaiting arrival of a new pump in a week or so, expecting replacement around Thanksgiving week. A1 on task to replace pump one in the Spruce Gum Pump Station. All 2021 jetting is complete. We'll return in July of 2022 to get the last few sections of the system along 30 Main Street, Nelson Terrace, and Egg Street. And lastly, to install a new hose bib, install of new hose bib faucets, and most are broken and leaking on inside and outside of the facility. We'll do this over the winter on the inside faucets. As always, please let me know if you have any questions. Jill Marsano, owner and president of VTOMs.
Okay, so what we've, what we found over the last couple of weeks is we've had a ridiculous increase in flow into the Spruce Gum Pump Station. And we thought that somebody was, with all the rain, somebody was pumping their, their, uh, basement water in with a sump pump or something like that. Well, as they came, we were seeing some highs and lows and, and then we, uh, they came to do some jetting and, and they opened them up after one of the rains, um, last week. And there was, and the, the, the numbers were right through the roof and the pumps were running almost constantly in spruce gum. And what they found is there's a breach in the line up in 153, like basically across from where that old trailer was that's, that's now town property right now. So it's letting the, the surface water get into the sewer pipe. There's no sewer leaking out. It's just letting the surface water get in. There's so much surface water getting in. It's pumping down, and that's why some people have noticed that that manhole, just as you start into the village heading south, you know, once you go past the town garage, it has some water coming out. Well, that's, that's the surface water is venting out through that air check valve that's failed. So that's got a little bit of surface water drizzling down the road. Today, they, they moved their equipment in yesterday and they dug today and they did find a, a Y that, that was broke. And, and they're in the process. Tomorrow, they have to bring more pumps because they can't keep up with the amount of water that's in it. They had to remove one section of that, of that culvert. And, uh, it's just a ridiculous amount of water in the ground there. Not so much coming through the stream, but right in the ground itself. So they have that removed. They're, they're bringing bigger pumps tomorrow to get down in and put a new Y on. But somewhere along the course of time, it had settled and cracked. And, uh, it's, there's just, there's a line there that doesn't show up, a smaller line tied into it through this Y that doesn't show up on the prints. So that was, makes it more interesting. But Markowski is there and, uh, I talked to him to, tonight. I stopped and, and saw the project and Jill's gonna do some more testing tomorrow. She's gonna bring her camera and go up through the, the pipe and try and determine where this other pipe is. But they're gonna also reconnect it anyways. And...
Nobody's getting loss of service?
Nope, nobody that we know of. We talked to, uh, um, Carol Denniston, who lives right across the road. And she had no problems, it wasn't, no, didn't know of anything. So she's, uh, you know, we talked to her about it. Jill's gonna put a, Jill's gonna put a, a die in the, uh, in the sewer, in her, one of her drains tomorrow to, to see if she can trace and see where it's, how it gets into the sewer line, if it comes through this pipe or this miss, miss, uh, mystery pipe that never got documented when the system was unsolved. So... That's where we're at with that. And hopefully we'll have it all corrected tomorrow and we'll be moving along. Anybody have any questions? Julie?
I just had a thought on the, um, a local person to work on the weekends. Um, maybe we could reach out to some of the local high schools, like the science and technology teachers. Maybe there's someone that would like some experience on a resume.
That's exactly, Jill, Jill thought that a student would be a great candidate too. So maybe if you had some contacts that you could work with Jill a little bit about or something, how to, how to, I don't know any of the school people or anything like that, if you, if you know how to get ahold of the technology teachers or anything like that. That would be great. Hold our unfinished business.
There is nothing on the agenda.
Um, there is one thing that I was wondering about. Um, the planning commission, did we ever post about? I didn't see any post go out. Who was supposed to do that?
I wasn't...
About needing to hire someone, not hire, but you know,
Right.
We need a new person to come on.
We were gonna, we were gonna put that out and...
So there's not, there wasn't ever any description or...
Yeah.
So I think that...
So who's gonna do that? I mean, we need to figure out how that's gonna happen.
We have to post this. Right, so Deb usually posts it in the paper.
So traditionally, if the planning commission would come up with a description of what you're seeking, and then that could go to the papers and we could put it on the website and that's all, it's how it's always been done. But so if you, if you had a description, um, or, you know, something that we, I, I mean, I had it in the minutes and that was only it. But so if there could be some sort of written kind of job description or pub, or position description, and then that could be distributed. That's how it's always been.
Yeah, just a planning commission for Vermont statute position, that's all it is. There's nothing that's...
Yeah.
We, we control this. It's, it's just a planning commission.
Vacancy?
Needs to be filled.
I mean, Deb sent something out last summer. I guess I could go back and look at what was sent out.
I can.
You can look.
Yep.
Yeah, because that, I mean, that was the one I responded to and it, it seemed, it seemed fine at that time.
I will, um, I'll work on that. And I'll be in touch with Deb and I will...
Sean.
With Deb and with Sean. And we'll get it put out in the usual paper outlets and then online. And if there's anywhere else that it wants to go.
It's pretty obvious we won't, there's, we're meeting next Monday. We will not, in no way have a replacement person by then, but...
I forgot that that is, we were hoping to have something in a couple of weeks and it didn't.
We, we have, we have, we'll have a forum.
We have alternates anyway, so.
We do have an alternate.
Lindsay, did you have some?
Yeah, I just wanted to offer, you know, the library has, um, the volunteer network that our community connector has organized. Um, so that could be a platform for this to be posted as well. And there's a community connectors meeting tomorrow night. So if there was any specific, um, description or information, I'd be happy to pass that on.
It's, it's quite as simple as just a vacancy on the planning commission.
Okay. Thank you. And I, I do, and yeah, I'm, I'm part of, I'm on the planning commission and I'm also with the community connectors. So I do believe that Sarah has already put in information in the past about the planning commission on there. But now that there is an active opening, it might be worth updating that. So I can, I can contact Sarah.
Okay, great.
And then we can put that out too, so that anybody... And then we can put that out too, so that anybody, any interested party would submit a letter of interest to the select board.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I'll be able to make community connectors tomorrow night because I have two meetings at once.
Oh.
It's also on-
Hard to be in two places at the same time.
Also the CUD.
Oh, nice.
So, yeah.
Is there anything else that?
Um, not unfinished or old.
Okay. Pedestrian scoping study.
Do one of you want to speak to that or do you want me to?
Yeah, I can speak to it. The scoping study is requesting a, uh, to post, where is my?
Yes.
Too much of a stack here.
My budget is stacked. I can read the, uh-
She didn't start off well. The lady who runs the firm by spelling Paulette wrong, it's Paul wet.
Paul wet. Local concerns meeting.
But in addition to their research, they've, they're scheduling a, a local concerns meeting about this pedestrian accessibility study for Sheldon Store to the Barnes Steakhouse to the library up past the church. And, uh, they want to have a, a meeting, schedule a meeting for December 7th. I think that's an off week for us on a Tuesday. And she's asking whether six or seven, I would say seven probably or-
It looks like she thought it was the same day as the select board meeting, but it is the off week for us, right?
It is an off week. And I assume have it here so that members of the public can express concerns about pedestrian accessibility in Paulett Village.
I'm sure members of the public have plenty of things to say about that. I mean, that's about the first-
Probably the same things.
That's about the first thing that I heard when I first moved here was about this terrible intersection.
Right. I think there was a young gentleman around town today or yesterday checking out the situation.
Good.
So do we need, I, I think we, I move that we allow this meeting to be warned and-
Is it our warning?
Huh?
Is it, um, a warning that the, is it the, a select board special meeting?
If more than two select board members show up to it, then it needs to be warned.
Yeah, it's-
Well, we give approval so they can't warn it.
I think they're going to warn it.
Right, but if-
But we have to, the select board has to warn it because if more than three select people are in the same room, it counts as a select board meeting.
Three or more people at the same.
She's saying that this, this is Nicole-
Fox.
Nicole Fox is head of the firm that we've hired along with the supervision of the, uh, Rutland Regional Planning Commission, Eric Hall. And says this meeting is an opportunity to provide input on potential improvements and impacts for pedestrian improvements project along Route 30 from Sheldon's Market to the U.S. Post Office, along Church Street, Vermont 133, and School Street from the Paulett Community Church to the Paulett Library and the intersection of Route 30, Church Street, Vermont Route 133, and School Street. Purpose of the meeting is not present solutions, but to better define and understand the needs.
Yeah. And they did attach, um, a draft warning.
Right.
And it does say that it would be the Rutland Regional Planning Commission and the Town of Paulett in conjunction with the Vermont Agency of Transportation Project Delivery Bureau, Municipal Assistance have begun a scoping study and that they're warning a meeting. So it does seem like it would cover-
So we would have to make sure that we post that in our normal places so that it's a duly warned meeting.
And they, in her message to me, asked that if the town would like for it to be virtual, that we provide the virtual component. So it would be-
I would hope we could provide a virtual component.
Yeah.
Are you available this day?
Very efficient.
I don't see-
Or to teach us?
Yep, I think so.
And I think seven o'clock sounds fine.
Okay, sounds okay. So all they need is to tie down the time.
So-
And the, uh-
And the, the link, right? The virtual link.
The virtual link. I think it could go longer than 7:45 because maybe she shortened it because she anticipated a select board meeting.
Well, we could ask her that we could go longer.
Right.
I mean-
We can only do virtual meetings in hour blocks anyway.
Okay.
Seven to eight.
Seven to eight, okay.
Do you need that in, do you have that?
I have her contact info.
Okay.
Um, so I don't know if there needs to be a motion made. I just feel like I want to be sure that we are doing it the right way in terms of the select board. Seems like the warning is all encompassing, but any moment when the select board meets outside of their regularly scheduled meeting, it needs to be warned as a special meeting. So it might be in the board's best interest just to do an additional warning that I put together.
Like we normally do our-
And it'll have the-
Exactly.
Exact same information, but that way it's something that, because it seems like the Rutland Regional Planning Commission and the consulting office is going to distribute this warning to their regular outlets and then we might just to be-
I don't see that it hurts for us to-
To be extra safe, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think then we should have a motion.
We can make a motion. John will make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we warn this special meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yeah.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have this special meeting to discuss with the, in conjunction and, uh, for the discussion on the, the intersection. Pedestrian scoping study. So is there anything else on the new business?
Yes. Good night, thank you.
Can I pick these up tomorrow?
Um, do you need a copy of, you need this copy back?
The original, yeah.
Maybe why don't, then you take this and scan it to me and I'll send it to the board.
Oh, okay.
That would be, yeah, that would be great if you wouldn't mind. Yeah, you can just scan that to me directly and then I'll pass it along.
Very good.
That way you can have, oh, awesome. Thank you. That's great. Thanks, Monica. Um, so the select board received a letter this evening, this is new business, um, from James Glick submitting his formal resignation from the Development Review Board effective December 21st, 2021.
Correct.
So, um, he would like, the letter reads that. And then it says, "I would like to express my gratitude for the opportunities Paulett has provided me over the past 13 years and I have served on the Paulett, that I have served on the Paulett Planning Commission, followed by the Paulett Development Review Board. I appreciate your understanding and I am willing to help with making this transition easier over the next few weeks. If you need to contact me after my departure, I am willing to chat via email to help answer any questions you may have. Sincerely, James Glick."
I guess we have to have a, we have to accept this, the vote to accept his resignation, I believe is the right course of action.
All right, then I'll move to accept Mr. Glick's resignation.
I'll second it.
Frank?
You might want to jumble the open position for the planning commission and the DRB in the same-
Yeah, after, yeah. Um, so we're voting on accepting James's resignation. Rich? Bob?
Yes.
Carrie? Okay. Well, thank you, James Glick, for what you've done.
I can relay that to him via email.
Please do.
Okay.
Um, so would you like for me to-
Put that, put the DRB position right up on, with the, the same, right next to the planning commission. They just only meet on, when a meeting is scheduled.
Okay.
Is there anything else on the new business?
Don't think so. Um, there was-
Can we do a public comment before our executive session?
There was-
You could, I guess. Does it, it's, it's going to be easier with the other two guys to clear the room instead of move into a different room, huh?
Yeah, so I think we'll have to clear the room so that you can all maintain-
Right.
This virtual component. So it might be, we can, anybody's welcome to wait out on the porch.
Um, that's, yeah, should we have public comment first?
We could do the public.
That's what I mean, yeah. Anybody's welcome to wait because the board will resume in session, um, following the executive session. So anybody's welcome to wait, but we, it might be of benefit to do the public comment first.
Okay, public comment. Frank?
Yeah, referring to the contentious issue of a monument location for some commemorative additional feature. I think this is like where it should form a subgroup to iron it out and not be the deciding factor to, on one, and have a group come up with a consensus position one way or the other.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I missed the, I couldn't hear the discussion about the scoping study meeting. Like, is that being scheduled for a particular time?
What, what day is it?
December 7th.
The 7th, at seven o'clock right here will be with the, the consultant company that's doing the scoping study.
They want to hear from the public as I described and, uh, which will help guide them on what avenues to return.
Judy?
I'm just here, um, I'm also a member of the Historical Society and I'm here with Rose, um, one of the people, as you, you all know, who does not support the monument on the green. Um, you've received a letter from me as a neighbor and I do hope you will still take that into consideration, um, my thoughts and, and requests. And also, um, just wanted, speaking of the green, just wanted to let you know that Perry Brown and myself and our little decorating committee will be out there putting up our Christmas lights very soon. And, um, so when you come down in a few weeks, you'll see it all pretty out there.
Do you have everything you need?
I think we do. We have, you, you gave us, um, a check and so we've ordered more lights and, um, so we're going to put more out there. Um, Perry, Perry suggested that he would like to see a permanent tree out there and I said, "I'm not even going to go there." And so we do have the, we have the, the tree next to the library and so we'll, we'll decorate that tree and, and hopefully the, the, maybe the little bushes beside that's, on either side of the, of the steps. So if anybody wants to help us, anybody wants to donate, to add to our, we're basically, we just have lights to put out there. Um, you know, we're hoping that eventually it's going to get bigger and, and everyone, you know, we can maybe someday have a celebration where we, you know, we put the lights out. We have a, a, a time when we have the community together and we, we, um, light up the green. But, um, for this year, we're just going to keep it simple and, um, and I appreciate the, the support that the, um, the, the board has given us in helping us to light up Paulett.
Thank you. Anybody else? Marty?
I just, uh, kind of going back to what Frank had suggested, I was unclear about that, if you could-
Frank, Frank had suggested that may perhaps the select board designate a committee to research the, the, is this what you said? To research the two, the monuments and, and determine the best course of action that's, that the town as a whole is in favor of.
Okay, what would the timeline be on that? Because this is a time sensitive matter.
Okay, we'll, we'll have to discuss it more at the next meeting. Um, we, we gotta, we gotta go through, we gotta look this over and, and decide, you know, is that something that we want to do even and stuff like that? That was just a suggestion from Frank.
Mike, could I just ask one more question?
Yes.
Is it a possibility that that, that this issue would come up as a vote at town meeting?
Yeah, I guess it could.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of that, but-
Right, but I'm just saying that it's, it is a possibility.
I, that's, that was a question I was going to ask, um, because I think that, that all too often people don't really consider, um, you know, in this case, the people down here and, and the opposition from some of the, um, some of the folks that have, have spoken out.
From a planning commission's perspective as far as land use is concerned, uh, one of the things we're considering, considering with the, uh, changes to the unified bylaws is that the conditional use type thing for uses in general have added parking and things like this, uh, in place to handle, like for example, a larger crowd that was mentioned before, uh, and, uh, because this could blow up to being a big tourist deal and you're going to have to look ahead to that potential. Sure, you could have people, there's people, there's revolutionary war people all across the country who travel the CD sites. So this is something that you may want to take into consideration. This is, this is-
Something left there? We're all good for tonight?
No, I mean, I've, I've seen, I can't even count how many memorials, Civil War monuments on town greens, um, I've, I've never seen them generate crowds. The, the people who are in the town already to shop at Max, they'll come walking down and take a look at it, but this is, this is not a magnet for, for tourists by any means. But I would, I would also just, uh, like to know whether, you know, the previous monument at the North School was something that was voted on or was it simply approved? Uh, what, what's the history of putting this out?
This is not the time.
So we, we got a lot more questions going on than, than we have answers or time for tonight.
And Deb, everybody in public comments get, public comment gets one comment and Deb has her hand raised and hasn't made one yet, so Deb can go.
Um, yeah, I think that this is a conversation that's a little premature. Um, I think that there needs to be some, um, time for the board to think this over and, and even if it can be a vote, I think that also VLCT should be contacted to find out how this, how this goes forward. Um, so yeah, I think that we're, the comments are getting ahead of, the horse is getting ahead of the cart right now. Um, so, but I would urge some investigation with VLCT or a town attorney to find out if this is, uh, an opinion vote of the town or if it's strictly a decision of the select board. Um, and the town may not have, it may not be a vote issue, but it may be a vote issue to the town. That's what's got to be determined and the select board needs time to figure that out. Thank you.
And Rose?
Oh, I just wanted to share with you a proposal the Historical Society is working on to, um, identify that monument a little bit better. It would be a double sided sign out on Route 30 in front of the North Paulett School so that you can see it coming both from the north and the south. This is what the mockup looks like, we're in the planning stages of this. And, um, in addition, we'll be working on educational material to have there for people to read about it. So we feel that that monument there, there's a monument at the end of the street here in front of McChesney's Real Estate. Uh, there's a mon, already a monument here on the green, um, that we're kind of monumented up and we just need to identify them- the green, that we're kind of monumented up, and we just need to identify them better for the public, for everybody to see and learn about. I don't think we need another one.
Thank you. All right, we're going to, somebody might make a, a motion to go into executive session, please?
I will.
John will.
A second.
You guys can wait, or...
Is everybody in favor?
Yeah. Oh, everybody in favor. Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
There.
Yes.
Yeah, all in favor?
All right.